To have the kids' best interest at heart? Seriously, seriously, with all the dads that's come on. Are you still gonna claim it's about science and safety? Covid has a lower mortality risk to children than motor vehicle accidents, influenza, and perhaps most importantly right now, from five to 14-year-olds is suicide. Do you know how many of these young teens are depressed? My daughter took her mask off outside and some kid said to her, she's been here for six months now. Some kid said to her, I didn't know you had braces. This is no longer okay for these kids mentally and emotionally. Giving the choice is not taking the masks away. I don't understand what you're gonna understand about this. You're not taking them away. You're giving parents back. Go ahead and look at your time. I'm not done. After two years of this with vaccines available everywhere and for almost all ages, but children, babies, that's, I mean, that's. And therapeutics, don't you think we can handle that as parents is making the choice to put a face diaper on our kids? We can't handle that. We own businesses. We have large families. We own homes. We own homes. I don't know what have we done for 45 years without you guys? It's over? If you all think that you know what's best for our children, better than we do, I'm here to tell you no. And it's a hard no. And if you don't change this, we'll change it. We'll take it into our own hands. And just going forward, freedom is the political landing.
Thank you for your service to our school. Please.
Sorry, did you just give your last name?
So please note my words are not to be construed as a threat or attempt to show hostility. I'm here in good faith to notify you of how I view your actions. My intention is to inform you of my assertion that you are continuing to be complicit in civil and possibly criminal human rights violations. We are at a point in our society where the inhabitants of this state and in this country are growing very weary in their distrust of the very public institutions you are relying on to determine the course of action taken for our students. This includes our elected officials, the CDC, DHS, and even the Department of Defense because they are proving themselves as corrupt liars who sold out to big corporations. At this point, we have every right to question their integrity and the data they use to support their recommendations, especially when they profit. In June 22nd, June 22, 2021, Ian Cheung wrote these words. "The existing scientific evidence challenged the safety and efficacy of wearing face masks as preventative intervention to COVID-19. The data suggested both medical and non-medical face masks are ineffective to block human-to-human transmission of viral and infectious diseases such as SARS-CoV-2 and COVID-19 supporting against the use of face masks. Wearing face masks has been demonstrated to have substantial adverse psychological and physiological effects. These include hypoxia, hyperkapnia, shortness of breath, increased acidity and toxicity, activation of fear and stress responses, rising in stress hormones, immunosuppression, fatigue, headaches, declining cognitive performance, predisposition to viral and infectious illnesses, chronic stress, anxiety, and depression. The long-term consequences of wearing face masks can cause health deterioration, developing and progression of chronic diseases, and premature death. Governments, policymakers, and health organizations should utilize proper and scientific evidence-based approaches with respect to wearing face masks when the latter is considered as preventative and provided to a lot of resources for your research." Now, my words are that I firmly believe that you are complicit in participating in psychological warfare aimed at capturing the minds of our children. This is evidenced by the use of social engineering to move our childrens and daughters away from their constitutional heritage as New Hampshireites. Also, you have acted outside of your delegated authority by denying them their birthright in your violation of several codes, statutes, and constitutional laws. Your actions are also a violation of the righteous freedom as you permit the indoctrination of our sons and daughters with the mantra of trust the science and get vaccinated. These are all direct violations of your oath of office. There is enough information to suggest the growth of a current political establishment is moving our society towards a digital identification system under global totalitarianism. And by accepting the ESSR funds, which are intricately woven into the Build Back Better campaign, you have shown your allegiance to organizations which are essentially at will with our Republican form of government and the freedoms our founding fathers laid out for future generations. I implore you to step back and look at the many sides of this pandemic. These mandates and the psychological damage to our children all in the name of fear and safety. Remove the mask mandate because it's the right thing to do. And make masks up and it's optional. And I ask you to take this vote this evening because enough is enough. Thank you.
Finally, I just wanted to express my support changing course, giving students the option. In, now, screening. When they're sick and. Also wanted to remind, there are a lot of kids in this school that, and when they go to work, still continue. So. Behave us to change course.
Keep missing up, Pembroke, they had you. This is the first time I've encountered something like this. And I just want you all to know, I'm a 45-year-old man who's worked my entire life. Andy, you can look at it when I'm speaking. I've worked my entire life, I've paid my taxes, and I've done everything the correct way and raised my children as a good Catholic man, okay? And I will tell everybody what is right for my children, not the other way around. I raise my children, I work hard every day, and I am a productive member of society, okay? So I am standing here and telling all of you that I will tell you what is right for my children, not the other way around. And Andy, if you see that as a threat, as you did in the email, I'm really sorry, sir, okay? But I will, as an American, stand up for my freedom and my rights as a father and as an adult. You guys have a good night.
Anybody else? Yeah, one more. Okay.
Actually, I'd like to more people in this room here, the South, because Joseph's time, the school board seems to not listen to the parents, taxpayers, voting people in this town. Last fall, last August, you put out a survey to all the parents and asked them if you wanted a choice for mask mandates. And the majority of the parents said they want a choice, but the board took it upon themselves to go with mask mandate. I actually emailed all of you and said, why are you doing this? And I was ignored. And then, other people in the room, the same situation, they were ignored. Furthermore, we put together a petition signed by the town, legal petition, a state law, I don't know if I'm saying 172, says if you get enough signatures, which we had, you had to acknowledge that petition, go forward with a town vote, with a town vote. I could come to that next meeting, but you took it upon yourselves to basically say you're ignoring the law. We are the law. That's what you said. That's what was told to me by many people in this room. So we have a school board election coming. And there's five new people, or three new people, four, five new people running against a couple of you in here, including yourself. So their names are Rick Fredrickson, Chuck Darian, and Amber White. I would encourage everybody in this room to consider voting for them because we need change on this board. And there's a lot of other issues that you've done over the years that aren't right. There's an over 20% increase in the budget this year that you're voting for. Ridiculous. I'm a financial planner. Inflation's high this year. Every year, you're two or three times higher raising the taxes in this town for the school board against what people make in a normal wage inflation increase. It's crazy. It's a waste of money you're throwing away. And nobody's being held accountable for this. We have people, we have two school superintendents making triple-digit figures, okay? I want to know where the money's going. We need change in this town. We need new people on the board.
Okay, we're a little fifteen, so we're a little ahead of the sun. And we have been, this being a work session, we've got a new agenda. So the first bullet point is preparation first, and this, we kind of printed this up, and documentation here. I think everybody here was intended to call a hearing, so none of it should be terribly new. I just wanted to give one last chance for the board to take a peek, talk about if there's anything that you don't understand or you want to point out. It ended up, just for the record, that the municipal committee is supporting all of our, all of our warrants, which is nice. There was a number of positive comments this year from the budget committee about the information provided for the timeliness and format. So that we continue to try to do things in a way that makes sense to them so that they can understand our numbers in the best way possible. You know, we did talk about next year doing the CIP a little bit different, to dive a little bit with what the town does. And that's on an old sheet, I believe. But I guess I just wanted to check in with you guys and see if there's anything else that we need to discuss before. No, the next.
I have a question, Andy. It might be for Patty, I'm not sure, or it might be for the lawyer, I don't know. Can we put something like resigned or an asterisk with a note on Ann Bong's signature? It just looks kind of, like if I was a regular old voter who didn't, you know, come to meetings on the regular and I went to the district meeting and I looked at this page, you know, and I saw like all these signatures, but I, that line, lines for Ann Bong just kind of jumps out as a question mark to me like, huh, I wonder why that school board member didn't sign this document.
So, we did bring that up with me, and I don't know specifically about like the members or anything like that, but I was curious as to whether the votes should be on there or whether or not some of the lines should be on there. And I think about Patty, he reviewed that, and so I'm assuming this is his recommendation for, but I did bring it up with the attorney because he cares.
Andy, just so you're aware, we don't always have all of the board signatures on the warrant. Some numbers aren't available when they need to be signed, so that has happened in years past as long as you have.
Andy, I have a question on that too. Because on some of the warrant articles, it shows like three to one, meaning we have four board members, and then some are confusing that we have five, so.
That'll be two.
Yeah, well, it's okay. And I will try to explain that at the meeting. It's because of people that were at the meetings. We had one meeting, I think Andy wasn't here, so her votes not getting some of the. It wasn't in any of them, but then because we had to change the language and some, we went back and re-voted on those ones when there were five people in the room, so it will show five.
Yes, Andy, you know that I am in support of all of those, even though that support is not formally in the record and that you can and should say that when you're doing that explanation, right?
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
But yeah, I'll point out that discrepancy because again, it is something that comes out and it's. Anything else, or, you know, not even just about the meeting, but about the process of budget development this year, anything that you'd like to see different going forward, any theories that you have, questions, concerns about, anything like that? Yeah. I don't want to say we've got a year, we've got nine months before we have to start the meeting.
So for the handles of everyone with look, I'm really pleased that they're ready to go. If you would just look at the two summary documents in the back, and if you see anything in the next couple of days that you wanted to change, let us know so that Kathy can get this posted online and start making trouble. We did, Mark helped us reformat a little bit so that it's more in a table format and then we're, and we redid the revenue section. I think it's a little bit easier to read and understand. So if I don't hear from you, we'll be able to.
We don't need to belabor the thought everyone wants to do, just expect them with a pretty short phrase. So with that, the next bullet point is sort of updates. This is more informational type thing. So the first sub-bullet there is board goals. I wanted to run through these really quick, see what's done, what's not done, see if people have comments, and in March, we potentially have them in work, so goals will be redone. So we're expecting as we end up this year and see a rep. So under communication, we had, we had a second sent to board of post-publicity when we can advance a million. We've been, we've been pretty good about that, the process says that, but obviously there are actually, that's when it changes with our work tomorrow. But I think that, in my opinion, that one's good. Update the website to be more easily navigated, there was a major website update, barely pay credit for that, it was in the works, I think, when we made that goal already, but I think the results are pretty good. Also, our communication board information shared, utilizing multiple platforms such as One Call Now, emails, school board websites, and Facebook. So Facebook is kind of the part that comes out there. We still haven't made a lot of progress on the board's social media presence, but I think the rest of that communication piece was accomplished. The next goal is live streaming meetings, which obviously we've been able to do. And then the last is a summary of important board decisions, something will be One Call Now and should be posted on websites and Facebook as soon as possible. Again, no Facebook, I think Patty has been doing summaries of at least our business meetings and sending those out. So I think overall, the communication section, other than social media presence, I think we have done quite well. In the budget section, we've got all materials presented to the school board and NBC will be made available to the public. That, of course, has happened.
I know, we're looking to have sort of like a dialogue as we go through each of the big topics here, Andy.
Yeah, very stuff with communication.
Yeah. So, I, I can't remember, did we vote on this goals document? Or, yeah, I didn't think we did. Because I'm not satisfied with the statement, the summary of important board decisions because it, I think it just creates a problem about like, well, which decisions are the important decisions, you know? I mean, if we're making a motion, chances are it's important. And it also then puts, excuse me, the onus on someone, person who's doing this, which I think has been from Patty and her staff, to make that decision, as to oppose, as opposed to just a more mechanical, like all the motions, you know? Motion to approve the leave request, granted. Motion to, you know, approve the school calendar, approved. Motion to deny the leave request, you know, just a list of the motions. And I think that it's not too much to ask to just report out the motions, and that would provide a large measure of communication. For example, tonight, one of the characterizations of our prior action was that, you know, we declared ourselves to be the law when we did not convene a school district meeting about the question of masks. And, you know, I don't remember the words on that motion, but that, that was not the wording of the motion. And so, for example, you know, if that wording, this particular wording of our motion had gotten out, maybe that would not have solved that characterization, but it may have provided just a little bit more public information. So in terms of communication, I would really love to see us get into the routine of within like 24 to 48 hours, just a list of the motions that we made going out automatically, no filtering of like important ones, unimportant ones, just all the motions. Here they are.
My only concern with that, that basically means the minutes, right? Because the only thing required in minutes are the actions of the board. And I would just need Sandy to be part of that discussion because I don't know how quickly she could have all of the motions written because she is the official, you know, figure of the minutes. And when I initially, I didn't write it, the important is a concerning word, we should probably address that. But my attempt was, for instance, if, when the mask mandate was going back and forth and remote learning versus in-person learning, those were the things that were, you know, that parents needed to know right away. So that's, those are the things that I was trying to send out, you know, this happened last night, you need to know this. Not necessarily that someone's child during leave was approved, and a parent is overly concerned about that within the, you know, the 24 hours. So that's, that was the distinction I was trying to make.
And we can always fire that stuff out. I don't want to set new goals here, obviously, people may be used to it. It's like, oh, yeah, but it's, you know, it's about, you mentioned, we'll bring it back when that time comes, yeah? Anything else in the communication section, anyone? Okay. So the next section is the budget, and the bullets in there are all the materials presented to the school board and NBC will be made available to the public. I think we've been good about putting all of that information that we get at meetings on the website at the same time, with the agenda package. So there's been multiple copies of the budget. You know, line by line, every single line, we see where all the money goes. It's out there publicly, great. The next bullet point is include more information of working salaries and benefits in terms of a town report. So we are including, if you remember in our original budget packet, there's a few pages that are budget officer, teachers in each school, and that's going to be included in the town report this year, I believe. And then the last one for budgets, provide more details so the public can understand what they're voting for. And, you know, a lot of that is, I think, what we do as a presentation of the meeting, the summary documents that Patty mentioned. I think the trickier is putting it into a format that's easily digestible. But I think that we've, you know, I think every year that I've been on the board at least, we've made, we've made steps in making that more available and easily understood throughout the whole entire budget. Notes are added every year, so there's stuff in there, especially if there are large increases in the year. Obviously, I was open to suggestions, but I think that that's good. And as I said, you know, we got similar comments from, the budget committee is here, so I think they're appreciative of the level of detail that we provide.
I just have a quick comment on the budget. I think that you guys made a lot of headway on that. You guys were able to, brand new, only used to it from a citizen, walk me through the process, that's a lot of line items to look at, and you guys were able to navigate it, show me where to go, where does it know, and how it switches each meeting. So, I think you made a lot of headway, just wanted to acknowledge that, to be able to show me what I needed to do in order to make informed decisions, so thank you.
Yep. I think it's super important. It's important that we get that budget information out in public if we're done. You know, if you add it all up between the meetings that we talk a lot about the budget here, and the number of meetings that the NBC focuses on the school budget, there's 10 or 12 meetings that are mostly dedicated to this budget. So it should be, you know, pretty easy for anybody in the public to get all the information about the school budget, which is great. Anything else in the budget section? Okay, facilities goals, including finalizing plans for renovations at the school, obviously that's something, but we do have a warrant article to get that process more firmly underway, so we'll learn more about that in a couple of weeks. Establish a small committee and gather public input regarding the future of the range building. This is one that has stalled, I have not been able to really make contact, but I think that if this is a priority for the board in the coming year, you know, like other happenings, the move play grant is not through one person, you know, we can certainly look at, you know, contacting VDS ourselves and trying to kickstart that process. The gentleman that I hope would be involved just has a ton of historical knowledge around it, so, but, you know, we certainly don't need to lie on the front perfectly if that happens. It's something that we can move forward on. Merkle facility updates provided board meetings, that's been happening, Josh has attended many, but he's at a basketball label, he's been talking about hiring Patty, so I think that's a win. And reforming the capital improvement plan to utilize a sound template, so we talked about that already, Mr. Florrie came in and gave us some of his input on that, and I think that that's all underway, so next year it will look a lot closer to me. Anything on the facility side?
I think just matching up some of the different topics here, I have liked it on the months, well, that was going to come out wrong. I was going to say, I have liked it on the months where Josh didn't come in person, but that's not what I meant. We'll have to see Josh in person. But I have liked it when he didn't come in person because he was always very diligent about writing his report in writing, and then I got it in advance. And it was that I liked getting his report in advance, because I like to see things in advance, you know, and be able to read it and think about it, and then sort of like have that in the whole mix of things coming into the meeting, and that's sort of in the spirit of that communication piece of getting things before the meeting. I know that there's a pro and con of, you know, you do miss out on like some conversation and some humanity when we let our staff off the hook of not coming to the meetings, but I think we also give our staff some of their lives back, or they can be more productive for us in other ways, especially with facilities folks doing things other than sitting at meetings. So I'm torn on whether, so I would like him to provide his reports in writing in advance of meetings, and then I'm torn on whether that means he doesn't need to come to our meetings on a regular basis in person.
Yeah, I think I would tend to agree about the written stuff, just again, we're transparent to you, we're trying to, we can read, reference it. But we can iron up, we can. But, you know, we can iron out details, make a date. Anything else on the facilities side? Okay, and the last category, I guess, means internal controls. So, we wanted to establish a policy subcommittee, which we did. We switch to business meeting, work session meeting each month, which I'd like to come back to in a minute. Consistent meeting attendance and attendance at both committee meetings and board meetings. It'll be nice when we're back up to full membership, where we can relieve all of the responsibilities to give and make sure that we have people where they can. And school board association training, I think everybody attended some training this year. We also had Derek come here, at least once, or at least once. Well, through the individual board over tasks, I think that's been okay as of late. And in time for meetings, we also did. So, starting going back to, well, does anybody have anything about any of that other than the work session versus business meeting?
I think it's great.
That was my next question. I like it, I think it gives these meetings, gives us the deep dive a little bit more. And to your point about Josh, it's a trifle tonight off, they can be here if you need them. But I really like it, but it's up to you guys, you know, put forward, whatever your input.
Yeah, I like it. I think we get a lot done on our work meetings.
I mean, ultimately, it's the same as again, you know, this way. So, that's about it. Anybody have any other comments in general on past year's board?
Good suggestion for formatting, and we can talk about it at the next work session. But it would be kind of nice to have like an Excel spreadsheet or something. My brain just always goes there of each goal and that you can just keep updating in like who's responsible or what, just so that we can see the progression. It'd be a lot easier when we go through this every so often to see where we've gotten. I don't know what you guys think of that.
I would agree with that. I mean, it'd also be nice because it could be kept historically as well, year to year, we can see it.
I think the year reference would be great. Like, hey, we've been organizing this one for eight years, still haven't done it. Like, are we ever going to do it? Should we prioritize this? Should we drop it? You know, whatever. And anything that involves Excel is usually something I have to get behind.
Okay, so moving on, next sub-board, the updates is elections. And I think elections and appointments should have been the same thing. I just wanted to kind of clarify the process again to make sure that the public understands what's going on and then talk to you guys about laying out the calendar or the schedule for that application process and all of that so that vacancy can be filled as early as possible. So, elections are on March 8. So, we, on the original calendar, there's two board meetings that open March 1st, but that's still breaking. So, that was a mistake in order to cover meeting then, and I'm sure that that's been said yet. So, that makes the next meeting of this board March 15th, because a week after the election. What I would love to see, even if I'm not here then, is that the vacancy be able to be filled at that very first meeting so that there's a full board to start the year. That makes the timing a little bit awkward because obviously there are candidates running and then it would be kind of a short turnaround for some sort of application process. But looking at the calendar, I think that we can do it if you guys all agree. So, our meeting would be, the meeting is March 15th. It's a week after elections. If we made the application process open on, say, the 7th to go through the 11th. I think last time we asked that all the applications be in Friday before meetings, we had to review them. And then on the 15th, we're going to presumably do a meeting.
Andy, I hate to throw a French in the works, or however that's English. I think that is just too confusing to have it be, because elections where people are voting, it is on the 12th, right?
No, it's on the.
It's on the 8th, sorry. You're getting my week mixed up. Okay, so that makes, that even underscores the point. Because what we would have is two things going on at once where people are, where voters are voting for candidates for the school board. And at the same time, individuals are applying to be appointed for a spot on the school board. And I just think that that is extremely confusing. And I even wonder if there's even a possibility where someone who's running as a candidate could also, as a backstop, like apply for an appointment. And then, you know, yeah, elect, you know, it just, I think we might want to change that timeline.
So, what would you propose?
I would do it later.
After the first meeting?
I, I think we might just have to not have a full five-person board at the March 15th meeting. I mean, I think it's unfortunate, but I just see there being so much possible confusion.
I don't think the original suggestion, culture satisfaction, 7th through the 11th. I mean, even if, you could push it back to the 9th, so we know the results. And then, whatever, a week after that. And then we did that stuff on that first board meeting. Then we can add on, it looks like we're talking another month and a half with a, you know, you know, you know, maybe it's four. It would be the first Tuesday of April, which is the 11th.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's, you know, a long time. And it would give, if we could do it on the 15th, if we give that person at the time to have the information, you know, the information, you get, you know, everything's ready from moving forward, you know. Pushing it off, it's going to be, it's a long time ahead.
If we did like the 10th through the 14th, is that enough administrative time?
The issue with the applications, I think, we, so we have the applications due by a certain date and then we send the questionnaires out to both. And it's a tight turnaround. Someone waits till the last day to give me an application, and then we send them a questionnaire. They only have a day, and you only have a day. If you want to keep the same process.
I hear you. What I recall, however, though, from the process that we used last time is that Andy pretty much read the questionnaire as part of our process. So, I would be okay with not a ton of lead time, you know, to like study the questionnaire before I heard it presented at a board, at the board meeting on March 15th.
I have a question. Does it have to be only seven days? Like, anybody in Cambridge can put their application in. Why can't it just be open from the first? So, like, why can't be more time? I mean, anybody in Cambridge, if they're interested, can apply. You guys can open it now and give people plenty of time. I don't, I don't understand why it needs to be like seven days.
And we could do, we could do it from tomorrow, the 10th or 11th, so.
We would need a few days for that to get together, questionnaire and all that, but then we can post it right away.
I mean, we have, we have talked about this meeting last time, so it really just means days, possibly.
We have it in our drive. I just foresee there being a lot of confusion between, you know, who is applying to be appointed to the school board, by the school board? And what is the difference between that and who is a candidate on the ballot who is running to be voted in to a position on the school board at the district election?
I mean, I'm happy with whatever you guys want to do, definitely. We're getting it open as soon as possible and just saving it open until as late as possible. It makes sense to me, too. But, so it gives, it also gives somebody who's reading may not have been elected the opportunity to apply, but, you know. So, you know, I really don't think we need to make a decision on the kind of work.
And the application is basically like, what is your name and what is your address?
Yeah.
So, no, but what I'm saying is, if the application period was only like two days long or three days long, is that inappropriate, given that the application is so crazy easy?
I think you can do it by consensus, just, you know, and I agree with what Melanie said. And I think we just take a few days to do an application, which is super simple. It's just content and fill. If you want to use the same questionnaire, that saves time because we can just send that.
Yeah, it's only been a couple of months. So, what about the third project?
Yeah, do we have to have the bifurcated approach of application and then questionnaire?
No, it's done. If you want to use the same one, we can post it.
Right, why don't we just, or even just combine the documents and have the application period be the 10th through the, or the 9th through the 14th? And it can be, you know, by noon on the 14th.
I'm okay with that. Doesn't give us a lot of lead time to look at before the meeting, but again, the red ball, meeting anybody, so. Everybody okay with that? So, combining the application and the questionnaire, including the one that we used and we're going to have that open from Wednesday night until Monday.
Beautiful.
Well, that's what Amy suggested, just now. The 14th, yeah, that only gives you one, two, three, four business days, or some less. Are they mostly emails or?
Email.
Well, you could, like I was saying before, we could, or.
Okay. So, how about we make them available now and they, for submission? Yeah, make them available as soon as possible for submission from March 9th through the 14th at noon. That way, to your point, Gene, if someone, you know, needs a long time to work on them because their schedules are crazy bananas, then sure, you have a long time to work on it. But it puts our submission period separate from the election.
Yep. Can you repeat that for me?
Sure. So, step one, combine the application and the questionnaire. Step two, make that document available as soon as possible. Step three, applicants can submit starting on March 9th and no later than noon on Monday, March 14th. I guess last step, to then, then applicants to attend the March 15th board meeting to present their, you know, candidacy to the board.
Not, should, that's on the public notice, they should like to attend to meet for that. If it's not already, it should be somewhere. And then I guess to clarify as soon as possible with like, beginning of next week. Okay. And I think I started to say this before we got too far into it, but just to be very clear, the, there's RSA saying how this is all handled. So, there's not, there won't be a third seat up for election based on just RSA's, whether it's. In case anybody out there wondering, we're not just voting for free. Anything else on appointment for elections? Okay, so next we have a special awesome trust, there's two pieces to this. One, I think is just an introduction. So, there's a thing in the drive that has trust fund balances. And two is, or it's in the budget packet. I don't think this is to go in too deep tonight, but I want to present the topic to everybody. It's a kind of a yearly conversation with the NBC about what these funds should look. And what I mean by that is, what is a reasonable balance to care of, sort of thing? Is there a point where we've put enough in and not spent much in a while and so we stop putting into it? You know, there are some that are much more fluid than others, like technology trust fund. You know, typically gets $10,000 put into it, and that's to save up for some major projects. If you look at the history of that one, the spend out of it is almost nothing, there's nothing. But we're in a year this year where there's some major upgrades that need to happen and using some. So, what I wanted to break to do is kind of start taking a work ethic and, I think at our, at a meeting fair or soon, next, but I would like to go into a whole, the discussion of all these trust funds where I don't know if we could maybe convince Jerry to join us. You know, this is not his job anymore, but his input, he, but have Patty and Amber tell us, you know, what's the actual definition of all these things? Look at the current, I want to look at the historical spend. And try to come up with some guidelines around these trust funds of what, you know, expected reserve is. I think some of them will be fairly straightforward and some of them will not be. The only capital reserve fund is used for so many different things. There's just a lot here. And I think that this is one piece that the NBC doesn't have their head wrapped around. I'm not able to offer a whole lot of clarification to them. And so, I think it's just something that I think the board should be clear on. And really, I think that should, this discussion that I'm talking about should happen in, probably shortly before like we start so that when we're drafting or it hurts, have a better concept of what we're pushing for. So, the comments were ahead, and like I said, I don't, I'm not prepared to actually really net on all these funds tonight. But I want to present this and get everybody to start.
I have a couple of requests. So, it would be very helpful to come into that conversation with some recommendations from, and I don't know the correct, best optimal source, Patty, Amber, Jerry, Josh, to some of the questions that you were posing, Andy. But I think we'll make our conversation much more efficient if we're starting from a place of, let's consider this as our recommendations, rather than let's just have a freewheeling conversation starting from scratch. So, that would be request number one. And when you're saying, look at historical, you know, funding and spending, do you mean more than what's on this spreadsheet? I mean, I can see here, you know, five years' worth of history, but I can't see, you know, for example, fiscal year 1718 in the school building capital fund. I can see, you know, what I think I see is $100,000 came in, $94,000 came out, interest. Or, maybe I'm not reading that correctly, but I see, I see those numbers. But what I can see that I don't see is any sort of breakdowns, especially with respect to expenditures. So, it would be really helpful if outside of the meeting, we could ask you to ask Amber or whomever to gather. We could ask you to ask Amber or whomever to gather any additional information before the conversation that you think we're going to need. Cause I find it, you know, it would just be helpful for us to have that at the ready. Rather than get, you know, seventy percent down the road and figure out like, oh, we gotta stop now because we don't have that information.
Right. And I think that would be, you know, when we get closer to that point, it's, it's a point of discussion as to what information we want. My intention would be basically what's on the sheet, but going back as far as we can. So for example, school building capital reserve fund was established in nineteen eighty-six. If we back those records, I'd like to see it. I don't care so much about the detail only because the legal definition of those funds, how much we're spending on, they're not in place. Right. So that's, that's kind of what I was picturing, but again, I mean, anything that anybody wants to learn about this is, is staying being, I just. I think it's a, a blind spot that the board has had and it comes up every year at budget season and we kind of, you know, we talk about it and we're aware of them. But I, I don't think there's a, I don't think anybody has another, like, depth of knowledge and that's really what I think. But I guess you could say it's a close board goal for next year. And again, you know, let's see the revenue. It's not something that has to happen in the next two months, but I would say my goal would be to have this discussion before the end of, you know, school year. Because when we come back at the end of August, it's coming towards.
I would like to differ. I think it is something that has to happen in the next two months because the next two months is right at the edge of the end of the school year. And traditionally we don't do a ton of work over the summer and then as you just said, we're right in August. So I don't think it has to happen immediately, but I do think, I agree with you that this is important and we should put it out, you know, soon.
Um, the other one was, I don't know, particular transfer area of capital fund. So the other thing that I want to bring up in the burning trust funds is for the past few years, um, at M B C meetings, Mr. Flory tends to always remind me of a trust fund. Um, that I don't think is on. And I'm not sure why. I think it's because of how it was set up or the way it's involved or something. Um, but it is, in, in his opinion, either not legalized or under legalized. So they asked Patty to reach out to him, took some clarification on what it is, what fall cases are. The way that he's put it to me in the past has been that it's pretty generally available. It's almost any future, you know, why I can get that money for a wide variety of things, um, and, and having. So I just want to bring it up, see, see if we can get a definition and have a little conversation about if this money is really that available. Um, because, you know, we've had applicants in the past when we've done small donations to the board, um, to fund certain projects. And if there's, you know, remember it was told fourteen thousand dollars, something up there to fund it to be used for some of those abundant beyond projects that would be. So Patty reached out and since she got her response.
So I'm sure there are actually two funds and, um, as Andy said, we've heard Jerry, um, over, over the years, talk about these funds. And I think the issue when I spoke to Jerry about it was that they're, they're not on that sheet. So unless someone talks about it at a meeting, there's no reference, there's no balance kept. Um, so he actually sent me the balance sheets. He did make it clear he's not involved in the trust funds anymore, but the M B C got the balance sheets as of December thirty first and sent them to me just so that I could see, look at them. Uh, and there's one fund called the School Educational Opportunities Fund that was created in two thousand and nine and has a balance of just over twelve thousand dollars. And then there is the Pembroke Literacy Fund from two thousand and six, and that has forty-one thousand dollars in it. So the literacy fund has primarily been accessed by, um, the Hill School, especially working in classroom libraries and, um, level reading books. So I know that Spold, Susie and Wendy have access to those funds, so we'll mention it in, um, to them. And then the, uh, educational opportunity fund, I believe, was created for a project that, you know, the way Jerry put it was basically any project a teacher can dream of that would not be funded by the budget. So, I mean, that presents a really interesting opportunity for classroom teachers and we should put something together and get it out to them so that they know that they can, um, come up with a proposal and potentially have that funded. We, um, I believe the house was named agents to extend on one of them, so request those through cows, but you don't have a public hearing or, uh, like traditions.
Is, I guess question is, why aren't they on the sheet?
Because these are the trust funds that were created by the school board. These, one was an anonymous donor, just, you know, put money into a fund and said, this is for the school and it's to be used for X, Y and Z. Um, but that was, that was an issue that it's not recorded anywhere. So I need to work decisions off this one of those balances coming in, um, to have those two funds included somewhere on, you know, a record of, so that we keep track of what's in there. That it's, it's a forefront people's mind to use them.
Absolutely. Yeah. Putting together some sort of, you know. Rest of the proposal and affect all three projects or whatever you call it, uh, and you get, you have the opportunity. You know, which are stuff that people are wanting to be able to do and. We can utilize that to be, it has, I also don't know if it still the case, but I went and asked you during budget season. They were talking about, you know, since Jerry did retire from trustee trust funds, the funds are being managed by a bank or something like that. And when you look for the fees of the management company, uh, many of the trust funds actually move money that's sitting there from whatever you utilize it as and. Or if you know the fees. So yeah, so we need to keep that on the top of the list and keep his mind on it and make sure we work. Any other comments on here is the trust fund discussions? Great. Um, so. With that, um, this conversation is properly finished. Um, to explain that a little bit, um, when I work with Kathy to put the stunt together. The, kind of the mass situation is just starting to change. It's definitely picked up speed in the past couple of weeks. So really, I, I think I just want to have a conversation and, you know, we don't do a lot of. Action at these meetings, but essentially does nothing we can't, um, if anybody sees fit. So I guess to start, I want to just gauge the board and see how people are feeling with, um, you know, the current situation and. How about where we're next.
So, um, I did meet with the school nurses and the administration. Just in case you decided to take this up tonight, even though it was posted that way. Um, I just really wanted to have input from our school nurses especially and the school nurses and the administration are ready to, um, have optional masking in the schools. And the, um, the cases are down and the nurses are not seeing the school as the environment where students are getting put in. You know, there may be, we talked about clusters and, um, you know, there may be three students in a gray bubble where earlier in the year we said, well, if that happens, the gray level should mask. But the nurse's opinion is those three students may, they may not be related. They, you know, they may, they probably came from the communities, probably not spread in our schools. So they are feeling comfortable, um, leaving that as an option. And we also talked about the new, um. The new update from D H H S, their recommendations have been reduced to three pages. And the intent is to lessen the burden on the schools in terms of reporting. They're only requiring weekly reporting now from the nurses. Um, so I, since we have been following the guidelines, uh, the entire time, I would like to use that, continue to use that burden on the nurses and. Um, change our reporting to weekly and to use the dashboard for that report to let, let folks know if they want any updates. Um, the nurses probably will update that more frequently, but at least weekly, and that's how we started the year. Um, and we, we started daily reporting when the cases went higher and people indicated, um, they would like to know what was going on in our schools on a daily basis. So I would like to again, go to the weekly reporting to lessen the burden on our nurses.
Okay, um, well, I will just open it up and I guess.
Sure. Um, I think that the, I concur with Patty's recommendation on the reporting change. I disagree with moving to optional masking. Um, I think that we decided early on the year to go with the medical expert recommendations.
Patty, we were quiet when you were speaking. Please be quiet when we speak.
She can't, the masks are for kids. Child abuse. They're not your kids. Don't let things start. Other towns have drunk.
No, that thing is going to get done if we have to cancel the meeting. We need to do a handout.
You're, you're, you're digging your own grave. At this point, you gotta admit the masks should cause the cases.
We have emails from you, Andy, saying you listen to the nurses.
Do you need a three year study to prove it? Group, show us the science. Show us the science. It's enough. Go home, look at your child saying, what if I did that to your child? Have you asked your children? Have they failed? Have you watched the video in Las Vegas about the kids? It don't work.
Please take the vote. We've been waiting.
Take the vote. We're tired of this.
So are our kids.
Wait, ah, would you like to, if we, if we didn't kill what you thought was best for your child? You want to put your kid, your kids, go ahead. No one's stopping you.
I don't know if you're wearing your mask everywhere, but.
It's going maskless guy. The mask do nothing by the way. As you know, I work in a company of sales, read the box. Do the right thing by the kids.
So our vote was to follow the guidance from the C D C, the A P A and other medical experts out there. And it included a plan to stop wearing masks. When we had no substantial spread for a period of time. And we have not reached that point. So I don't think that we should stop wearing a mask. It goes, it is premature, but I do think. Well, I wasn't done. I just wanted to say, I do think that we should continue to have this conversation on a regular basis. Cause I think that the, we're headed in the right direction.
So, um. Going back to Patty's information, um, nurses and school administrators, um, that's something we were looking for criteria. It's been a whole time since it's been politicization of politicalization of this on both sides. It's been done everywhere. Um. At, at this point, given the recommendations of the nurses based on, uh. We need to get, who was that T volunteer? There's not a mask in their parents and their kids in Pembroke. You know, and, and, you know, I, I'm looking at it, it's been a while. I looked at this and I said, you know, I'm going to listen. Said, Patty said you bring them in. Administrators, so at this point in time, favor of proceeding with the mask, the mask.
Let me, let me get, um, not even myself.
Yeah. Um, I'm not opposed to masks going optional, but as a registered nurse, masks are not going to be an all or nothing thing. There is going to be cases within our schools. There's going to be cases within the classroom. I'm not ready to go, to go optional as of yet until our school nurses who are doing evidence-based practices, who are registered nurses. I am going to be looking for a matrix that shows that some of the cases in this class, they need to wear a mask for a week. Too many cases in the school at this. When the cases have been lower than nine days in a row. Our nurses have not attended a meeting and played her my hormones. I would like the school nurses to weigh in in a meeting.
Your qualifications do not outweigh theirs. Exactly. That's in our schools every day without kids. What's going on? Doesn't anybody think that maybe they see what's affecting these kids mentally? They're in the nurse's office all the time. Wake up. These kids are trying for help. Your qualifications do not outweigh theirs. Stop throwing that out.
The faster kids go for it. Try to be a damn choice.
It's an option. Move on, say.
You have no idea what this means. We have special rules for your children. We picture children now. What would you, what would you think? Do you think that's right?
You're never there.
That's a meeting. We're just fucking vote on this shit. Come on.
This is it.
I agree with the fact that Andy said we started with the matrix. I think that we need to keep having conversations and fix our matrix and I think we are almost there. I need to continue to talk about it.
Figure it out tonight. We're not leaving till we figure it out.
Let's go. I get affected by COVID. Here it is. Let it go. What do you say? Relaxing stuff. We're destroying these kids mentally. You happy about that?
They're just so. They're gonna start showing up without masks on. What are you gonna do then?
You're giving them all the month of mask.
Nobody's wearing a mask correctly. I don't know. People are touching their faces and they're putting them in their pockets. You can claim being a nurse, you can be trained and proper using medical equipment. Nobody's.
They don't wear their. It's cosmetic theater. It's you trying to knock loose controls. Sick of it. Patty, do what's best for the kids. Tell the chief. Hey, James Lee, he did the right thing. Follow his lead. Let your pride down and do what's best.
We have to stay. We do not consent. We want your recognition. We will step into your rope. Walk the way. Do it. You hear this is the voice of the people, guys.
Oh, this is the voice of most of the town.
I do also think that we all take it all as a school board member to be thinking about the health and safety of every single child, every single teacher. Every single staff member and every single visitor in our building. And I don't think it's unrealistic for us to change our matrix and go over the numbers and have a conversation. And I don't think it's unrealistic for us to change our matrix and go over the numbers and have a conversation with our nurses.
Just spoke, we're giving these kids every day.
And you can say what you need to say, but until we have that, I'm not gonna be in favor of optional mask being deployed.
I'm not lying to the public when you put your petition in to be on this board, you lied to the public.
You got your all bonded, right? You're all bonded, right? Because that's next. That is next.
Hope that it's something positive.
Nope, they absolutely are. Unbelievable, two years later, what happened to this promise? All these kids have already been sick. Jesus.
I think that's all we know, Patty.
Hey, baby. Then everybody goes to their risk by now.
All right, what's your vote, guys?
Yeah.
We need to vote now.
No, our kids are waking up.
But you don't vote on this, that changing. Another thirty days with these kids, come on.
Do it, they're at different.
What, they're just not gonna come to school with a mask on and mask?
Nope. They're gonna do what? Call the police?
What are they gonna do about it?
Nothing.
Take that.
Mask disobedience in schools.
It's common.
Yep, the high school kids are all on board.
So what are you gonna do about it?
Well, they know something's going on.
You gonna kick them out of school?
Imagine. Imagine this. Why be proud? Yes, he calls, he gives her. We want the answer. He deserves it, and so do our children.
School nurses, guys. These, these school nurses. Not just any school, that award, our nurses from pill and papers and P A. Every single day. Took what they said and put it in one ear and out the other, because of your standpoint, it's not medical.
How qualified are they?
And we're not saying no masks, we're saying optional.
Optional. Optional.
You want to wear a mask, swear.
So, if I could. Just to clarify, what you guys want from us, oh, we're not going to talk over you all night. We can't have a conversation and have any kind of vote if you consistently interrupt us. I, I completely understand that most of the people in this room disagree with things that have been said. We know. We've heard you, we're listening to you, we may not agree with you, but we hear you. We can't get our business done if you don't let us speak. If you continue to not let us speak, if you don't let us speak, we're not making progress. If we're not making progress, then we'll adjourn the meeting, and you don't get a vote. That's how this is gonna work. I need you guys to respect, that's all I'm asking. You don't need to agree with me, please be respectful, that's it. So, if you could.
Just say another quick thing, so. I do understand where Andy's going. The CDC does still say that they recommend indoor masking, eight through twelve schools, some vaccination status. Stand where the matrix started. If you understand that HHS still recommends this swish choose model of layer application, which does include the physical distance. Wash your hands. Um, said that I am looking to have the board be able to have a conversation and ask their questions of our school nurses to make sure that we do systematic approach, so that if there is an outbreak, if any classroom needs to mask up, that the school board is well aware, whoever those members are, of how it's going to be operated, which will also be seamless with our parents with their eyes, because they will. It's not over. I understand that we are doing much better in the past nine days, and that is awesome. But the hospitals are still in surge class last night. It does take time, it's not gonna be fixed overnight, and I think that we need to keep that in mind. I, I'm trying to finish. So that we can have an open dialogue conversation, and I appreciate Patty bringing back that information. But I do think we need to fix the matrix completely and have an open conversation with the school nurses, is how I feel at this time.
So. Oops, the decent number didn't talk. I'm currently looking at. Just. This was actually a month ago, they were at a peak, the seventy-year-old average was around thirty-eight percent. They were at seven hundred fifty. As a graph. It is important to put that into context. Seven hundred and fifty. In the end of October. Um, from. Total cases were at around three hundred. Still, I'm gonna have to find that. To me, obviously, the thing that's weighing on me or promote is the hospital. Um, I think it's clear, I'm, I'm not a scientist, the board, they don't say that, so I think they're the severity. Place area is much lower than the previous, relative to people. Doesn't, doesn't seem to be hurting. Um, but I still do have concerns about hospitalization. And that's because, you know, I think we need to think bigger in if our hospital was full and somebody has a back or a heart. Here that they. That's an important factor. So, I'm looking at, I think I've mentioned before, I'm just an IT guy, my division math. Friends. And we are currently, like I said, I'm still more than two times what we were made this meeting. But, the trend is obviously facing downward. So. I am kind of in the middle, which is not a place I usually am. My honest feeling at the moment is, I don't believe that I'm ready to drop a date tonight. But, looking at the numbers, the fifty trees would tell me that within the next few weeks, we are going to be down to levels that are close to what we were during the summer. So I have an idea of how I would like to do that, but I'm gonna, so that you was willing to make a motion, so. Make a motion. Send the, today briefly, previously, but. Going for a.
Our kids are gonna be so psyched, you don't even know. They'll be the heroes.
Yes.
Yeah.
I will second motion for discussion. So I guess I'll, or I'll know, just. If you have anything to add.
I don't have anything to add, thank you. I don't have anything to add.
But one of my. Hope is. Uh, but. Otherwise, I'm looking. There's biggest concern. The school will be checked. It's shut down.
It's ending now.
That's been the goal, make sure that. We, schools closed. We may have.
Now, that was something I, I didn't mention, if you don't mind. Uh, the nurses did say if there was a cluster that you would wanna take action, which means it's in a classroom, and there was three, four more students, and there's evidence that it's being spread in the classroom. So not necessarily three per grade level that are unrelated, but.
That was my question, if I can jump in. We had had a conversation way back when, um, balcony or something, I'm kind of feeling it on. Anyway, I'm, I think that the HHS guidance on targeted masking is very clear. I, I would need to know where we're at and what we're pitching in targeted masking in classroom. Or I.
And I'm in the same exact spot, like I would wanna hear, like, that this is how it's gonna work, because. The, yes, I understand, and I can sympathize as well that we wanna go mask optional. But what is in place, what are those metrics going to be? And how is that gonna be communicated when a class needs to go masked because they have five, six classes, five, six cases in that class? That means, that means to be working out in my opinion before I can go for masks. I think that what the nurses had intended was, um, to, there was something in the guidance, I think, or in a call with Dr. Chan, that they would offer assistance to determine whether it was a cluster. And I think that's what the nurses would do, they would call HHS, get their guidance on whether it was identified as a cluster and related cases. Uh, and at that point, I was, I would think it would make sense to have the nurses have the discretion that if it felt like there was something happening in a classroom, to, you know, send word home, like, get everybody masked, and maybe it's on the side of the address. But, to let them make that. Because it would be very difficult to come up with a matrix for every situation and to wait for two weeks for a board meeting.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, um. I. I would. I would. I was. It's weird. What was in your rights to reject it? We have full vacation from early in, with eight more student days. Full vacation. And, you know. As Andy pointed out, come on, the HHS website right now, it says, the HHS recommends face masks for infection, et cetera, et cetera. And it says, um. And the HHS recommends face masks for everyone when the community transmission rate is substantial or responding to cases of cross-infecting. The CDC guidance still says, and on our website right now, this is updated, anybody who's ever been a nurse, someone who's been wearing a mask, for all students two ages year. Ages two years and older. So, I am still uncomfortable with going against all three of the governing bodies on this. But, again, hopefully, if it's finalized and coming down, um, if your. If your motion was to rescind the masking date on the first day of that one patient, it would be eight more parade of mandates. I think that's the support, but I don't, I don't need.
We're on vacation without masks, guys.
Is COVID smart enough to go, hey, we'll wait till the kids get off vacation?
I know.
Frankie.
You're following the guidance, recommend.
Yeah, yeah.
Recommend, recommend, you're following the guidance, what you just said you wanted to do, recommend.
Come on, guys.
Recommend, you literally just said you wanted to follow that.
I will send the question. Can you remind me why we don't have a meeting again on March first? I know you said it earlier.
Hey, we, we've never had one on school break weeks, we should have never had one.
Okay.
The people who are, clearly have issues that are like afraid or nervous or don't feel comfortable with this, wear your mask. The kids and the parents feel comfortable, and if they don't, they'll wear them. What point is choice? The HHS both recommend, they don't mandate for school, please, guys.
You'll have two weeks to try it out for vacation, for a vacation week. So if, if your worst fears came true, came true, which it would not, because we've seen other schools be fine, you'll have a whole vacation week. If we can sit together and convene and come and mend it.
So, so in our session. One of the things I wanna mention that we talked about before is when you have masks optional, the stigmatizing effect that can occur. But you're in law, and one child that is not wearing a mask in this booth. The emotions shown tonight really exhibit the fact that people can be very disrespectful when it comes to the topic of masks.
Has it happened yet?
This is child abuse.
Has it happened? The children don't really think that, you don't need to mask properly.
Holy, that gets to school, that's the school of.
And that hasn't happened yet.
I don't have any other comments, thanks for letting me get that one in, I think we should probably call the question.
Yes, please. Don't forget, we're all bonded. Don't forget. Are we just doing it? File a complaint. File a complaint, reach out.
Get rid of masks.
Yeah.
General.
May I add one? Taking a full face. Targeted mask policy. I'd like to amend the previous motion to allow the pool nurses to, on a case-by-case basis, implement targeted masking policy based on, less due to outbreak. Okay. For a roll call vote, um, so, you mind reading that out for everybody?
I have some.
Motion to amend the mask.
I think he said tomorrow.
She backed up there, everybody. I made a mistake. Motion to amend the brief. Full method.
If you want to.
I will second the amendment. The last one for discussion. All right, no one?
No.
Yes, no?
No.
Right? Um, I don't have. Who else want to? I, I will make a motion to.
Thank you, chief. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to rescind. I'll make a motion for rescinding the mask mandate. The nurses, nobody calling to implement targeted masking in case by case places. Um, beginning on Monday, March seventh. I'll second.
We have a discussion on that?
Yeah, I've settled down, yep.
Not totally opposed to your motion, but I would still like the opportunity, even if it was virtual, to have our school nurses come to a school board meeting. We haven't done it in six months, I don't think it's unrealistic.
And what they see anyway. We're not on the board, you just heard from them via their representative.
And I also think there's some beneficial too, that, um, the elections are the eighth, the next meeting is the fifteenth.
But you're gone for three.
I like the school on the two.
The two seats, whoever those may be, have a function to weigh in and ask their questions of the school, so I don't.
They shouldn't, it's been two years.
Do you know that?
I still think that if this board and our staff didn't have the medical expertise.
You don't. At all. Don't want to be here, don't fuck yourself up there that high. You don't, you do not. Anybody, you're going on your feelings.
Then I don't understand why we just have the expertise to get out ahead of the guidance now. You know, it just, you know, decades.
CDC and the HHS did not.
I still think, I just think it's premature.
Is it wrong? Wait. Our full wish to be on red cards, uh, we'll call the question, it's on the other side, Amy?
No.
Please.
No.
Okay. Um, so, do you have any other items, any other presentation or portion of this, or to get to a lot of?
So, I do think that we should, um. I think it would make sense to. I mean, it's pretty horrible as a human to be subjected to the behavior that this board has been subjected to.
No, no, it's not, it's pretty.
I mean.
Drunk with power, it's a new.
I'm tired.
And for now, guys, stop our kids.
Die. You can't have our choice. Down. Die. Stop lying to this kid. Stop lying.
Supposed to public the kids.
So what I would like to do is propose having the nurses here at a meeting to have a conversation about masks. But I do not want to subject them to this sort of, um.
No, we'll be fine. But we agree with them. You afraid of that?
I'll represent.
Not at all.
Not at all.
Not at all.
You know that.
She wanted to have it in a quote, like, you know, on Zooms.
You know, potentially as an alternative, um, having the nurses at the meeting. Instead of just reporting out, you know, from, sounded maybe like there was a. There could be, um. A plan, a document, a new matrix, you know, like, um. A, a sort of robust proposal for the board to act on to document a detailed mask optional plan.
That's exactly what I'm looking for, too, if we could have, we had a mask policy going into place, the matrix. For one to go mask optional for us to vote on and be.
I, I think, I would, I will ask them certainly to provide that for you, but I think their, their struggle, I think that was the recommendation for tonight. Um, and I think the struggle will be, he's trying to come up with, and I wanna bring a matrix that you're, oh, that's not really what we're looking for. So I would, it would be helpful if you should send me some suggestions on the things that would help you make a decision based upon the skills, the levels of children. Um, that is hard for me to do, because I'm not a medical professional. Right, I would need their medical expertise to lift out, you know? And I'm not looking for something that's etched in stone.
Hmm.
Um, last sort of example, so, these are the examples of instances where classrooms would be masked. These are the examples where cohorts would be masked. These are the examples where teachers.
More rules, right? More rules to follow.
You know, I, I'm, I'm just. I don't have the answer, but. So that everybody is clear on. When, when we say targeted masking, like, I as a school board, yeah, when someone asks me, like, what does that mean? And then I say, well, I don't know, I don't feel like that's right.
What they shared with me today was that they would consult the HHS to determine whether it would even be considered a cluster. And that if it was considered a cluster, then they would do targeted masking for the population that it was appropriate for. So if it was a cluster in, you know, if it's an elementary classroom, and it's just that one classroom, then they may have that classroom.
Yeah.
So, so that's definitely a thing that I think we would like, you know, document, okay? But I, and I'm speaking for myself, I mean, I see Melanie nodding a little bit, but I'm speaking for myself. I would be fine if it is written in a for instance kind of way. Not like, eh, this is the only way this will ever be done, so that we're putting strictures on them and not giving them flexibility.
Don't touch that, please, look, that's the way.
Literally?
You can't control everything, guys.
Last item, on the agenda is the school calendar.
The only significant changes, um, that you'll notice, we have, uh, September thirteenth as a non-school day, which nobody's thrilled about. However, if there are, there's an extra election this year, so on September thirteenth, there's an election, um, state primary. Um, so everyone understands that we don't get school on a bunch of days. Um, the, we did propose coming back, um, not the, I think you can't have the date, it's not on it. Right, so the twenty-fourth would be the first, um, professional day, and the last day of school would be, um, June sixteenth. The only other, um, usual or different date would be December ninth, there's an asterisk, and Hill School has asked if they could have parent teacher conferences on December ninth, Hill School only would have no school, to allow a day for parents to come in. So they'll have a half a day the day before into the evening, and then a full day the next day to schedule their parent teacher conferences. And the elementary school needs, um, forty-five hours less than middle and high school. So it's, it's not an issue for them to set it that way. And that's it, the rest is pretty standard, and the vacations are the same as conference.
And Hill School requested that, so we must get an improvement, right?
Right.
Does this, I'm sorry, anybody else have done?
I, I have a question, um, I. So is March fifth this year, is that the, um, school district meeting? Right, and that's the first Saturday, the last Saturday of school vacation?
Yes.
Um, does it always fall that way?
No.
And is it falling this way on the calendar? You know, I mean, I just know, um. Probably, okay, because I, is there anything we can do about that? School district meeting is so, um, has such low attendance anyway, and anything we can do to prevent that from getting worse?
I like adding it to, but I believe that meeting, state except by, I'm saying.
Can we not control February vacation?
I think the only, um, flexibility exists between the town and the school that they could flip if there was agreement. But I'm not sure who has the ultimate decision-making.
Okay.
With that one.
Okay.
But that's not so, I think we're relevant to this, so we can still prove this, and I didn't have that.
Okay. But that is correct, that we can't change February vacation, right? That's just.
I, we, I mean, technically, we have a familiar schedule, because CR2C is longer, and it's more fragile.
Just not done, okay.
It's been traditionally that week, because an substitute is the week.
Yeah. Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, um, I, I'd like to just formally request that we try to have that conversation, to not have the school district meeting on the Saturday of February vacation, please.
Is anyone on the calendar? Not on the schedule, still waiting.
So much.
In a second? Second. In a second. Okay, now proving the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, proposed, uh, purposeful calendar. Okay, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, and.
Very quick note, um, I know it's long, but a very quick note for goals for next year. It would be awesome if possible, I don't know what constraints there are in this, but if we could get this done a month or six weeks before this time of year.
Please, we wait for conference to get theirs done, but they, it's been done for, you know, January-ish. So, yeah, we, we pretty much wait for them and then follow that.
Okay. Okay, so, uh, that's the end of our agenda. Just going to. Remind us of our intention, please, for our next regular meeting.
If so. Okay, I need for.
So our next regular meeting is, um. The school district meeting, um, here at the auditorium. Uh, March eighth is voting for both towns' schools, um, collecting positions, and then March twelfth is the town meeting, and also here is the. If nothing else, I'll accept one for her. Listen to the chairman.
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.